Great, and so I have a, and we've also invited, member chaplain has asked, Dr. Gaye Brune, who we heard from earlier, the president of the DuPage Chapter of NOW, National Organization for Women, who joins us via Zoom. And yes, it's a great day, Women's History Month proclamation. So here, I'm going to turn it over to you, member chaplain, and then I will move in that direction, providing the appropriate amount of social distancing for you to carry on with your presentation. Thank you very much all. Please proceed.
Well, hello. Oh, and Gwen Henry, Treasurer Henry is here also with us via Zoom, so it's great. Did you want me to read the proclamation or did you want to read that?
I was gonna let you do the whole shebang.
Really? Oh, then I have to get my glasses. Hold on. Okay. So, okay, proclamation honoring March has National Women's History Month. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social roles in where every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas throughout the U.S. history, women have played a unique role by providing the most volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and the equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, and emancipation movement, and industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a fair and more just society for all. And where it is essential that the role of women in history be highlighted and valued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I.
Daniel J. Cronin.
DuPage County Chair. Do hereby resolve that March is designated as National Women's History Month in the county of DuPage. And citizens are encouraged to observe March as National Histories Month in appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. So with that, oh, can I have a motion? A motion? Second? I guess we're getting a motion for second, so. Do we have a motion on that resolution?
You see any motion?
Second? Okay, great. All of us in favor?
Aye.
And it carries. All right, so thank you all so much. So I'd like to introduce, as Chairman Cronin said, Gaye, Dr. Gaye Brune is here from the National Organization of Women, and I know she has a few words she'd like to say. Oh, you're on mute. You're on mute, Gaye. Oh, is she on mute?
Okay, I had to make sure the host. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. As you heard, my name is Gaye Brune, and I'm a longtime resident of DuPage County, very longtime resident of DuPage County, and president of the DuPage Chapter of the National Organization for Women. It's a great honor, it really is, to represent DuPage NOW here as the DuPage County Board. I think it's the first time we've ever been invited to speak, though I'm sure it's not been the first time we've been here. We need to look no further than this room to see history makers, or history makers as I see them. DuPage NOW is proud to have played a part in their stories. As we stand together, we stand with our heads bowed beside our Asian and Pacific American and Colorado people now as we mourn their recent losses. We say together, in this county, in this world, that the violence must stop, and it must stop now. DuPage NOW was one of the first local chapters of NOW founded decades ago, and we've been saying this for decades. Most of you know us from either campaign work or our continuing struggle for reproductive justice. But we didn't start then. We started protesting beauty pageants and restrictive clothing, demanding equal pay, and our place in the Constitution. And believe it or not, we're not done yet. Our members helped write and pass laws that defined sexual assault, defined domestic violence, and sexual harassment. And we aren't done with that yet either. We lobbied for Title IX, led the struggle to pass the Violence Against Women Act, and are still fighting for paid family leave. We helped create, fund, and run women's shelters in this county, violence hotlines, court advocacy programs, and we assisted in many sexual harassment lawsuits. And guess what? We aren't done yet. Our members helped found the first Take Back the Night marches. We marched in local pride parades, and we started youth outlook dropping centers for LGBTQIA youth. And yes, we've campaigned, lobbied, marched, picketed, rallied, and escorted to keep abortion safe and legal. And we're not done with that yet either. We know, and we've always known, that the county board played an important role. We really didn't know exactly how much. So, a couple of years ago, we started going to debates, and panels, and forums, and focusing, and asking certain questions, looking to be told what the county was going to do. And we didn't see any of that, and nobody was asking about the things we thought were important. So we asked the women running for county board. We came out, we blatantly asked, what will you do for women? It's a little scary, but we asked, and they had answers, and they won. Now we have a board that just doesn't talk about us, but is us. And that, my friends, is something to celebrate. That's our history. And we're not done yet. Thank you, and for claiming this day as Women's History Month.
Well, thank you, thank you so much, Gaye, for those words. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out. And just real quick, I'm just gonna say a couple more things. I really want to thank all the elected countywide officials, Darlene Rusketti, Kathy Carrier, Jean Casmerek, Candace Adams, and Gwen Henry for joining us. And Gwen, I mean, has been, you know, one of the first elected countywives, and she's a trailblazer, leading the way for other women. But besides the elected officials here, DuPage County is really leading the way in women running departments in DuPage. So it's really, I think it's really that we should acknowledge our women running departments. And responding to the coronavirus outbreak, and having to make tough decisions addressing the public and employees' fears and concerns, and assuring them that we'll get through this has been no easy task. So I just want to say thank you to the awesome women who are employed at the county.
Thank you.
And give a special shout out to the women in leadership that are heading departments. And we have Mary Keating in Community Services, Karen Ayala, who runs our Health Department, Sarah Hahn, who's running Stormwater, Janelle Chadwick, our Care Center, Margaret Ewing, Human Resources, Cheryl Marquet, County Board, Joan Olson, County Board, Suzanne Armstrong, DuPage County Courts Administrator, Linda Kurzwe, Executive Director of ETSB, and Helen Kringle, Supervisor of Assessment. So I think that is something that DuPage County should be really, really proud of, all these awesome women leading departments too here. So thanks, everyone.
Very nice, member chaplain, very nice. I'm gonna remain here just because of the health, safety protocols, if I may, but I'm gonna invite Member Schorzy and Linda Zerwin to gather near the podium. I'm happy, of course, to welcome Greg Schorzy. Greg is our ETSB chairman. I always think it sounds like a cheer. Give me an E, give me a T, give me, you know, so, but ETSB Chairman Schorzy, and a first responder himself, which makes him uniquely qualified for that position. And I'm glad that you can help me honor some really important people who are on the other end of the phone when you dial 911. Linda Zerwin, she's done a remarkable job for us at ETSB. She has an illustrious career. We crossed paths years ago when you were a patrolman and patrol person, or patrol officer, and I was in the state's attorney's office. And you've been dedicated to law enforcement and serving the community for a long time. We mark the week, this week, in the week of April 11th in DuPage County with a proclamation. Because we can't invite all of these men and women to be with us today, we have the opportunity to see some of our telecommunicators in photos that we've assembled to honor their important lifesaving work. I'm going to read the proclamation here, and then I'm going to ask Member Schorzy and Linda Zerwin to please offer some thoughts. So here it is. The proclamation goes as follows. Whereas since 1991, the second week of April has been celebrated as National Public Safety Communicators Week to recognize all public safety communications professionals who provide a central link to the public safety services on which citizens rely every day. And whereas, the county of DuPage has three public safety answering points, PSAPs, we know, that's the lingo, including Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center, ACDC, PSAP, DuPage Public Safety Communications, DUCOM, PSAP, and the Village of Naperville with their PSAP. For the enhanced 911 systems servicing visitors in more than 932,708 residents of the county of DuPage, and portions of Cook, Kane, and Will. And whereas, these 151 public safety telecommunications are first and most critical enhanced 911 contact to the public our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, these 151 public safety telecommunications engaged in the operation of emergency response systems have a duty to respond to over 2 million 10-digit dial and 911 telephone calls from the general public for police, fire, and emergency medical assistance. And whereas, these 151 public safety telecommunications dispatch said assistance to help save the lives and property of our citizens, contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, above and beyond the daily rendering of emergency services, these telecommunications using emergency medical dispatch also telephonically delivered three babies, saved seven lives via CPR, and received two meritorious service awards from either their PSAP or community. Whereas, these 151 public safety telecommunications are an integral connection to the interoperability of the 911 system for communication with our first responders by expertly monitoring their activities, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, especially during a year of extraordinary circumstances and unknowns, including civil unrest and pandemic. And whereas, the ETS Board acknowledges these 151 public safety telecommunications for their continued commitment to public safety dispatch and consistent quality in customer service while maintaining the highest level of professionalism 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman, along with the members of the DuPage County Board, acknowledge the week of April 11th through the 17th, 2021, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and further express our deepest gratitude to all the men and women who serve as telecommunications. I'll entertain a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye, opposed nay. The ayes have it, enacted, and approve this 23rd day of March, 2021. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the wonderful job and the service that you provide to our community, vitally important service. And with that, I'm gonna turn to Member Greg Schorzy.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for wonderfully read and heartfelt resolution that you read. I really appreciate that. You know, as a longtime firefighter, paramedic here in DuPage County, I've seen firsthand the wonderful job that our telecommunications do, and certainly in this current challenging environment, they have just done an absolute wonderful job. You know, it's not a glamorous position, you know, you know, people, when they think of 911, they don't, they don't, they think of the firefighters, they think of the police officers, but the dispatchers, our telecommunications, play just as an important role in that, in that response. And I'm happy we got to show this montage of our communicators who do serve DuPage County. You know, we wanted you to see their work environment, not only working, but also having a little bit of fun. Some of those pictures are having fun, and just so you know, those pictures were within the last year, but also be earlier than the last year, because when they didn't have masks and stuff on, we wanted you to see their faces, so we took some older pictures and put them in there. But, you know, as the montage showed, and as our chairman read, that besides the daily requests for emergency services, they saved seven lives this past year using emergency dispatch, they helped deliver babies, they do an absolute wonderful job. And, you know, I, along with the ETS Board and our Executive Director Linda Zerwin, and as well as everybody here, can't, can't say enough of our appreciation to them. So thank you again, appreciate it.
Thank you. Please.
All right.
Come on.
I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I think an interesting fact, since we're honoring women today, is, you know, throughout the course of 911, it has been primarily staffed with women. And so I think that that's an important point. And I think the only other thing I want to add is, both the centers, DUCOM and Addison, have Facebook pages that you should follow, because they do a lot of information, and Naperville's is done through their police department. And we're all very proud of the wonderful centers that we have and the high-quality people that we have answering those 911 calls. Thank you.
Fabulous. Thank you. Thank you. So I do have a couple of remarks to offer, if I may, please. Thank you, Member Pichowski. After, after months of energetic advocacy, we'll call it that, energetic advocacy, on behalf of our DuPage County residents, last week, I was very pleased to announce the partnership with the state of Illinois to expand our community vaccination site here at the DuPage County Fairgrounds. The state has agreed to supply us with additional separate vaccine doses per week to operate the site, which increases availability for our residents. This week, DuPage NOW is receiving 23,491 doses of vaccine. We are operating the community vaccination site with our local staff now five days a week, and opening on Saturdays from 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. To give you an idea, this increases our doses provided at the community vaccination site from, on an average, 26 to 2,700 doses, to this week's ability to get 7,000 doses into, into arms. I really need to thank our Board of Health President, Sam Tornatore. He has been so solid and so unyielding in his advocacy. DuPage County Health Department Executive Director Karen Ayala has been a marvelous leader, and has been a very effective advocate, and just a champion for us, for what has been a painstaking and unrelenting effort to encourage our colleagues at the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Governor's Office to understand the great need for vaccine here in the state's second-largest county. I believe we also successfully reminded them of our dedication, our dedication to an efficient and equitable distribution of vaccine. As you know, DuPage continues to lead our region of collar counties in vaccine administration. More than 226,000 residents have received one dose, and 130,000 residents are fully vaccinated, more than 14% of our population. So each shot administered reduces the impact of COVID-19 in our community, bringing us one step closer to that time that we will be able to feel comfortable socially interacting, close with people, hugging friends and relatives, relatives, let's say, opening up businesses, schools, meeting places, churches, and gatherings. We'll take it one cautious step at a time, but we will continue to march forward. As we celebrate our progress here in DuPage, I must ask that we continue to adhere to public health guidelines in this last stretch, particularly over spring break, which is upon us soon here. I ask residents to continue to follow CDC and Health Department guidelines so that we can emerge from this pandemic and increasingly return to normal sooner rather than later. Finally, a reminder to all, Congressman Sean Caston will visit the Community Vaccination Center this Friday at 9 a.m. Board members are invited to visit as well, to be present. So with that, I think that concludes all my remarks and the chairman's report. So we move on to the next order of business entitled, "Public Comment." Public Comment. This is where we invite folks from the community to come and share our thoughts, their thoughts with us. Where have you got their... Okay. So according to our rules, members of the public are afforded time to address the board. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes, and the total time for public comment shall not exceed 30 minutes. We do have three folks here. The first three are just seeking to offer a record of appearance, a record of attendance only. We have Brian Hertz, a civil engineer from Manhattan, Illinois, on the subject matter of the resolution that's on our agenda today, 220-083. Does not indicate whether he's in support or opposed, but it's a record of attendance only. Is that fair to say that, sir? Okay, Mr. Hertz. The next individual seeking to record a record of attendance only on the same subject matter, item 220-083, is Scott Pritchett. Scott Pritchett from Park Ridge. He is with an organization, looks like APSA, APSA or ARSA? I don't get to have that, it's a P or an R. Thank you very much. Then we have a record of attendance only, Michael Werthmann, Werthmann, W-E-R-T-H-M-A-N-N, from Rosemont, Illinois. He's available for questions only, does not indicate what the subject matter is. Moving next to individual, an attorney from Mokena, Illinois, Lyman Teeman, T-I-E-M-A-N, on this, oh, it's Z20-083, and wants to offer some testimony. Please proceed, sir.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lyman Teeman. I'm an attorney in Mokena, Illinois, and I represent Leonard McHenry. And Mr. McHenry is under contract to purchase a five-and-a-half-acre site, a parcel of land located on the west side of Route 83, and south of 91st Street in unincorporated DuPage County. His intention is to build a gas station with a convenience store, a drive-up food service window, and a car wash. The property has been rezoned to a B2 classification in 2017. The B2 classification allows for the gas station and the convenience store, but does not, under its own weight, allow for the drive-up food service window nor the car wash. So as a result, we're seeking conditional use permits for a car wash ancillary to the gas station and convenience store, and a drive-up food service window associated with a convenience store to allow one of our tenants to serve food through the drive-up window. As I indicated, this property was rezoned back in 2017. At the time of that rezoning, there was also a special use permit that was issued for that property that allowed for approximately 70,000 square feet of commercial use, and two drive-up food service windows associated with outlets. That development was never followed through on it, nothing was ever built, and as a result, we are currently under contract for the gas station site. I just want to point out that the B2 district, we do meet all of the bulk requirements of the B2 district. We meet all of your codes in relation to building, health, safety, welfare, fire. We meet state regulations. Everything that we build on this site is going to be at the direction of our engineer in concert with the county engineer, and working through IDOT and IDR and IEPA. So we're asking that this board concur with the decision of the Development Committee that was reached at the meeting last week to approve our conditional use permits for the drive-up food service window and for the car wash, and that was approved by a vote of four to two at your Development Committee. We're asking for your concurrence with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Nelson from Wheaton, on the subject matter of community, community mental health boards.
Good morning, Chairman Cronin, DuPage County Board members, and DuPage County staff members. I'm Erica Nelson, a 23-year resident of Milton Township and a Wheaton resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. There are very few people and families in our communities who have not been impacted by mental illness, substance use disorders, or developmental or intellectual disabilities. I am one of those people. My father and my husband's brother both passed away from health complications due to alcoholism. Over a year ago, in February 2020, a diverse group of community members met for the first time, hoping to bring a 708 Community Mental Health Board to Milton Township through a ballot initiative. On December 21st, 2020, we delivered to the Milton Township office in Wheaton more than 1,700 signatures collected from residents over a five-month period, all during a public health crisis that shut down our cities and towns. My brief comments are intended to share some facts about community mental health boards, and some examples of needs for our community members that often go unmet through the county or state. Under House Rule, Illinois, Illinois House Rule 708, a community mental health board's key role is strategy, planning, allocation of funds, and coordination of other agencies and professionals that work with the local community for non-duplicated services and programs. The April 6 ballot measure is seeking a tax levy to fund a Milton Township Community Mental Health Board. To clarify the levy rate, the limiting rate that the board may levy per Illinois state statute is .15%. Of the Illinois townships who have established a mental health board, the average levy is .05%. If approved by the community, the elected Milton Township Board will set the levy amount with members of the newly convened Community Mental Health Board. Illinois ranks 35th nationally in spending for mental health, and 43rd in spending for developmental disabilities. A local psychologist in private practice in Glenellen told me that referrals to her practice have increased to the point where she and other private practices are sharing open appointments for therapeutic services immediately for community members as waiting lists increase at the county and state level. From a February 4th, 2021 press release from the DuPage County Coroner's Office, DuPage County saw a 52% increase in opioid overdose deaths in the first six months of 2020 compared to 2019. Kim Zeller, President of the Ray Graham Association here in DuPage County, offers this service reality check. As of December 2020, Illinois has a waiting list of over 18,500 people with developmental or intellectual disabilities in need of services. Of over 700 Milton Township residents are registered for services. Of those, more than 300 of our residents are actively attempting to obtain services. It is unlikely, Kim said, that the 700-plus Milton Township residents will get the services they need and deserve from the state. One of township governments' main focus is to administer social programs. They protect the taxpayer by addressing the needs of our most vulnerable community members before they become a crisis for the person and their family. If the referendum passes, the first year for the newly formed CBH Board focuses on conducting a local Milton Township assessment for current mental health, DDID, and substance use disorders needs, underserved community residents, and unmet needs. The Community Mental Health Board is governed by Illinois House Rule 708 that governs all 708 boards across Illinois. I sincerely thank you for your attention, for your commitment, commitment, to the citizens in our community, and particularly those who are most vulnerable. They are sometimes less visible, but no less engaged in the life of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Murray, on the same subject matter? I'm sorry. Oh, okay, sorry. I just read it off as the clerk handed me the order. Paula McGowan, please.
Morning, Chairman Cronin, County Board members. My name's Paula McGowan, and I live in Glenellen, and I've been here for approximately, why I lived here all my life. And many of you know me, I've been coming here to I've been coming here to the board before, you've been here at the board for about twenty years. And I've always been a part of the drug court and mental health movement. Today, I'm going to talk to you about something that's very dear to my heart. Been out there for me and my family, the mental health that we've incurred in our family. I might have to replay some of the things that Erica said tonight or today, but I want to talk to you about this because I think it's touched every one of us some way in our life. It might be our mother, our father, sister, brother, or even our children. But there is a referendum on the ballot on April 6th, the general consolidate election concerning a proposed mental health board being formed in Milton Township. Milton Township voters will have the opportunity to determine if a 708 Mental Health Board, substance abuse, and developmental disability will be created. The reason is because DuPage County Health Department does not have the resources to deal with the number of residents who are in need of the mental health services. There are approximately three hundred and seventeen people waiting on the list, as Erica has stated. In the first six months, like she said, in 2020, there was an increase of twenty percent of drug overdoses preceded in the same period of 2019 by a fifty-two percent increases of drug overdoses. One in five adults experience a mental illness in a given year. One in six children have a developmental disability such as cerebral palsy, epilepsy, autism, or Down Syndrome. One in five young children ages thirteen to eighteen experience a severe mental disorder in some point of their life. One in ten children aged twelve and older have used drugs, marijuana or heroin. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for ages ten to thirty-four years old. These statistics show that it would be very beneficial to have those that are affected screened for early treatment with the 708 Board. The 708 Board would eliminate long waiting lines to get into treatment that now exist in our county. The 708 Board will give faster treatment for families that are in crisis. The Board will also provide support services and will be affordable to any Milton Township resident. And the maximum levy sought to the ballot referendum would be .15, which is the limiting rate. In Bloomingdale Township is the first 708 Board to be formed in DuPage County. And I have today with me somebody that does volunteer for the 708 Board, that is the first Board in Bloomingdale Township that's involved with this, and I'd like to introduce you to Mike Murray. Thank you.
Please proceed, sir.
I thank you to the board and chairman for giving me the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Mike Murray, as was mentioned, and I live in Roselle, Illinois, in Bloomingdale Township. And I'm here in support of and to ask your outspoken support for establishing a 708 Mental Health Board in Milton Township. I know that is not your area of governance, but as community leaders, people listen to what you say. I'm here because of the last several weeks, some incorrect information is being spread in Milton Township about the nature of mental health boards. One of the areas of misinformation is about the cost. As was mentioned, the amount listed on the referendum is not what was even suggested by our grassroots community. It's a maximum allowable or limiting rate. My taxes in Bloomingdale Township went up, are you ready? A whole whopping seventeen dollars a year. And what did I get for that seventeen dollars? Well, I can only give you a partial list because a number of programs are so numerous, and each program funded was something that was not funded before the Mental Health Board. We screen over nine hundred preschool kids for something called executive functioning. By finding the preschool kids who are behind and getting them prepared for first grade, we give them the positive start we hope for all our children. All our police departments have social workers. Please call Chief Doug Flint, Chief Steve Herron, or Director of Public Safety, Frank Jim Reese, and they will tell you the profound difference that has made to their departments. And they were all early supporters of our Community Mental Health Board. If you live in Bloomingdale Township, you have access to our outpatient medically assisted drug treatment program from a federally qualified clinic. And we also funded that clinic for telepsychiatry well before the current pandemic, so we were prepared. We fund uncovered prescription drug costs. We fund job programs for those with developmental disabilities and mental health issues. We have a youth center with a counselor onsite. We're organizing a comprehensive children's network to make sure every kid gets the right start. That's just a few. That's not even all of them, okay, of the programs we fund. So my seventeen dollars goes a long way. In fact, I wish and lobby to make the amount greater because there is so much more that is needed. There are lots and lots of gaps in service in every community, and those gaps are best met when the community is involved. Stigma is still a huge issue. You fight that best on the community level. When you're in trouble or in crisis, there's nothing better than local help. So I ask each of you in your position of authority to speak out for community mental health and to support our 708 Community Mental Health Boards. Thank you for your energy.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. A worthy and virtuous cause. Thank you very much, sir. I think that concludes our public comment. We move on to the next item entitled Consent. Is there a motion?
Chaplin?
Is there a second?
Second, Garcia.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Kraduski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Tornatori?
Aye.
And Zay?
Aye.
Okay. We move on to the next order of business entitled County Board. Member Ashley Selman, as she's recovering quite well. We have, who will be speaking in her place?
Oh, I can take.
Member Chaplin.
I can take.
Member Chaplin, wonderful. Please proceed.
Thank you, chairman. So I will move to approve CBR 19621, Resolution Appointment of Don Desart to the DuPage Housing Authority.
Second, Garcia.
There's been a motion and a second, seconded by member Garcia. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Kraduski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Yes.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Tornatori?
Aye.
And Zay?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin?
Thank you, chairman. I move to combine items A through F. They're all appointments to various boards.
That would be B through F.
I mean, say B through F, sorry.
There's been a motion to combine items, seconded by member Rutledge. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Zay. Forgive me.
Yes, I'd like item C pulled, please.
Item C pulled, sure.
Okay, with leave of the body, we will, hearing no objections, so it's item B, D, E, and F. There's been a motion by member Chaplin, seconded by member Rutledge. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Kraduski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Tornatori?
Aye.
And Zay?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin?
Thank you, chairman. I move approval of CBR 019821, Appointment of Mark T. Franz as a member of the Emergency Telephone System Board. I move approval of CBR 019721, Resolution Appointment of Ronald A. Almaron to the Wheaton Mosquito Abate District. I move on CBR 019921, Resolution Appointment of Tracy Olson to the Wheaton Mosquito Abatement District. And I move on CBR 020121, Appointment of Thomas S. H. Stolt to the Wheaton Mosquito Abatement District.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Garcia.
Member Rutledge? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Kraduski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Tornatori?
Aye.
And Zay?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, member Chaplin, out of the order of fine.
Oh, we have numbers, letter C to do.
Oh, we are going back to that, okay. Separate roll call, forgive me.
No worries.
I thought we took it out of the record. Forgive me. Am I staying corrected? Please proceed.
Thank you, chairman. I move approval of CBR 019521, Resolution Appointment of Rosa Linda Campos to the West Chicago Mosquito Abatement.
Second, Rutledge.
There's been a motion and a second. We have Mr. Zay seeking recognition. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I am disappointed in this process, and nothing against Mrs. Campos, I'm sure she'll do a fine job, but we're replacing Donna Smith, who has served on this board over thirty-five years, was a member of the county's task force for mosquito abatement. And I think it comes down to basically a personal feeling on this. Donna Smith was the supervisor in Winfield Township. Obviously, she had some clashes with one of our board members on a diaper drive and some other things, and, you know, these two things shouldn't have anything to do with each other. She has served for thirty-five years. She knows more about mosquito abatement than anybody in this county. And I guess if this is a new thing we're going to do, I had many people call me from West Chicago and was told that, you know what, there's a new majority and our people are going in. That's what they were told. So again, I remember a couple of years ago, I don't think the majority took it that way. We appointed the best people to that spot, and I'm just disappointed that we're doing that. I'm sure the Campos family is great. We just approved Mr. Campos to the West Chicago Fire District just two weeks ago. So again, I'm thinking, if we're looking for people for boards, we have plenty of boards out there, but to take somebody off a board who has been there and just basically got a letter from the county and basically out the door and said, "Thank you for your service," after thirty-five years, I think is pretty poor. So I will not be voting for this appointment.
Okay, further discussion? See none. There's been a motion and a second on this item C. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Kraduski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Tornatori?
Aye.
And Zay?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted. Thank you very much. By the way, thank you to Ashley Selman, wish her well. Moving on to the next order of business entitled Finance, member Liz Chaplin.
Thank you, chairman. I did ask our state's attorney, and unfortunately, I have to take each one of these separate, so I cannot combine them.
That's okay. That's okay.
Okay. So.
Oh, there's a lot of them.
I know, there's a lot of them. We just want to err on the side of caution, so.
There you go.
Okay. So with that, I move approval of FIR 018521, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the DuPage Housing Authority Family Self-Sufficiency Program, Community Services, the amount of $121,726.
Second, Garcia.
Seconded by member Desart. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Kraduski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Tornatori?
Aye.
And Zay?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin?
Thank you, chairman. I move approval of FIR 018621, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the Forty-seventh Year Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $9,656,830.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 018821, resolution acceptance and appropriation of the thirty-third year Emergency Solutions Grant, $542,824.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Oh, we have Mr. Schworzy seeking recognition.
Please forgive me being fairly new. I'm not sure point of order here, but do we not have a quorum?
Yes, in the beginning of the meeting, we had announced that we don't have a quorum, so we have nine people present, but, you know, ten is a quorum, so.
Despite that, there's only seventeen in attendance? Okay. Okay, that was my question. My apologies.
Yeah, physically present, physically present is the test, and so, yeah, so we had to abide by state law.
So, just, again, just from my information, so even though there's only seventeen board members total in attendance today, with the member Solomon being out, you still.
Nine is at a majority of seventeen, but I don't know, I defer to the. Quorum is based on the total number of members of the Assembly, which is eighteen elected county board members.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
I always listen to my attorney.
Thank you, sir. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. No, it's a good question. Thank you. Please proceed. We're in the middle of the roll call.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 018421, resolution additional appropriation for the General Fund, $2,868,100.
Second, Garcia.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move on FIR 020221, resolution additional appropriation to the General Fund, $931,080.
Second, Garcia.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval on FIR 020521, resolution appropriation for the General Fund, $1,806,157.
Been a motion. Motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 020621, resolution additional appropriation to the General Fund, $1,882,960.
Been a motion and a second by member Garcia. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori. And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 20721, resolution additional appropriation to the General Fund, $16,695,741.
Second.
Seconded by member Garcia. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 20821, resolution additional appropriation for the Building and Zoning Planning Fund, $941,480.
Been a motion and a second by member Garcia. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 020921, resolution additional appropriation for the Local Gas Tax Fund, $941,480.
Seconded by member Garcia. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 021021, resolution additional appropriation for the Animal Service Fund, $22,720.
Second, Desart.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 021121, resolution additional appropriation to the Care Center Fund, $83,900.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Diciani's an I.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 021221, resolution additional appropriation for the Geographic Information System, $10,747.
Second, Garcia.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Diciani's an I.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 021321, resolution additional appropriation for the County Infrastructure Fund, $11,985,000.
Second, Garcia.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 021421, resolution creation and appropriation for the U.S. Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Program, the amount of $27,357,321.
Second. Second.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Solomon, Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 019321, resolution approving forgiveness of the inter-fund loan between the General Fund and the County Infrastructure Fund and the DuCom Construction Fund.
Second, Garcia.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori. Aye. And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, member Chaplain.
Thank you, Chairman, and finally, I move on FIP 006521, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Marsh &amp; McLennan Agency LLC to Provide Assistance in Evaluation of the County's Health and Wellness Benefits for Human Resources. The period covers April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2024, for a total amount not to exceed $600,000.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, Member Chaplain, a fine report. Thank you. We move on to the next order of business entitled Development. Member Sam Tornatori.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Before we begin, just a bit of house clipping for the record. Earlier this morning, on Item A, the Attorney for DCO 22-21 Ordinance Z 2083, indicated his desire to present testimony. It's the policy of this Board to only deal with testimony from the Zoning Board of Appeals, public record, not any public comments. The Attorney's comments this morning were just that, not testimony to be taken into consideration by this Board. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve DCO 22-21 Ordinance Z 2083, Beretti. This is to approve a conditional use for an automobile, laundry, mini mart, drive-through food service in conjunction with an automobile service station in the B2 General Business District. This was denied at the Zoning Board of Appeals, six to one, but approved at the Development Committee, four to. This motion is made in the affirmative, so a yes vote would be consistent with the Development Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Garcia. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none? Mr. Clerk, please call. No, I see Member Kuduski seeking recognition.
Just, just real quick, I know the zoning board denied this. I was also in no vote at the Development Committee, and I'll again be voting no today. Thank you.
Okay. I see anybody else seeking recognition, Member Zay? No? Kind of hazy in those two rooms. Yes, has there been a motion and a second? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
No.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
No.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
No.
Pachowski. Renahan.
No.
Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schorzy.
Aye.
Eleven voting aye, six voting no.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve DCO 23-21.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kuduski.
Don't we need a supermajority, since the zoning board voted to deny?
This is a conditional use, it's not a variation. It doesn't require a supermajority.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve DCO 23-21 Ordinance Z 2090, Avondale-Hinsdale LLC. This is to approve a variation to increase the height of a new internally illuminated monument signed from six feet to approximately 14 feet, and a variation to increase the copy area of a sign from 48 square feet to approximately 234 square feet. This is a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve, and the Development Committee is also vote to approve unanimously.
Second, Garcia.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
De Ciani's an aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Thanks, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve DCO 24-21 Ordinance Z 2091, Barcenowitz, to approve a variation to allow the unfinished side of an existing fence to face outward. If the County Board does seek approval, this would require a three-quarter majority, because the zoning hearing officer did recommend to deny, and the Development Committee also did not approve this by a six-zero vote.
Okay. And a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Member Pachowski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
No.
Zay.
No.
Chaplain.
No.
Chavez.
No.
Covert.
No.
Desart.
Nay.
De Ciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
No.
Hart. Kuduski.
No.
LaPlante.
No.
Ozog.
No.
Pachowski. Renahan.
No.
Rutledge. Schorzy.
No.
And Salmon.
I think the resolution fails. Mr. Clerk? I'm sorry, Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve DCO 25-21 Ordinance Z 2106, Shuro. This is to approve a variation to allow six-foot-tall, 100% closed fence within the 10-foot corner side yard. Again, a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve was granted, as well as a unanimous vote of development.
Second, Garcia.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
And Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve DCP 49-21, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract to Harris Govern for Annual Soft War Maintenance and Support Services, as needed for the period April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2022, for Building and Zoning Division of Transportation and Public Works, where contract total amount not to exceed $35,623.09. Competitive bids not suitable for competitive bids sole source. While the agenda does not indicate what the vote of the Development Committee was, I can assure you in the minutes will reflect that it was approved six-zero at Development Committee.
Second, Garcia.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart. Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
And Salmon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A fine report. On to the Order of Economic Development, number Amy Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of EDP 005121, Awarding Resolution issued to the Resilient for Youth Training Services, for the amount of $78,047.
Second, Rutledge.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
And Chaplain.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Member Chavez. On to the Order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to let, let you and the Board know that currently there are no units under isolation at the care center. The COVID unit is empty. Good news. The guidelines and status will allow visitors, hoping to allow people in person by later on this week, and that will continue as long as there's no outbreak, so.
That's fantastic. What a remarkable accomplishment there. Yes, thanks. Hats off to the leadership over there.
Also like to report about an 80% staff vaccination rate, which is well above normal.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Great news. So on that, I move approval of HHS P 52-21, Contract Purchase Order with Optimum Management Resources to provide technical assistance to, for DuPage County Homeless Continue of Care, March 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, not to exceed $38,625.
Second, Schorzy.
Member Rutledge seeking recognition.
Thank you, Chairman. Did a quick run of the numbers of all of the items on the HHS Agenda this morning. Comes to $1,888,625, or $625,000. And I've asked this question before, and I'm not sure that I ever got an answer that sticks with me, but there's got to be a way that we can reduce the amount of temporary labor that we're putting into the care center. I've been in business a long time, and it always costs you more to hire temporary labor, and so that's the, what I'm seeking an answer for today is, is what can we do to reduce this amount of money that we're putting into temporary labor over there?
Okay, so I know a little bit about this issue. So you need to, so it's, it's very, very challenging. Very challenging, a very difficult work environment. It's very difficult to recruit and retain. So I would strongly recommend that you get to learn and know a little bit more about operations. I mean, I don't mean to sound in the least bit off-putting, but it's a unique sector, employment sector, and it's a very, very challenging set of responsibilities in the work environment. And so I, I, you know, I, I know that there has been some concern raised about it, and, and I take those concerns very seriously. But I guess at this point, I would strongly recommend that we embark on a fact-finding effort, and to try to, you know, maybe follow the lead of Member Renahan and the Chair of the Committee. And, you know, I think whatever they're doing over there, they're doing a few things, really, really important things right. Getting through this pandemic with this remarkable record of accomplishment is astounding. So I would strongly recommend that, you know, these concerns that you have that have been expressed by other Board members, I, I would strongly recommend that we embark in some discussion, and some, some engagement and learning and sharing of information, exchanging concerns. And, and then after that exercise, under Member Renahan's leadership, I, I think we can come back and sort of evaluate things. But I really think there's a need to sort of gather all the facts and, and learn a little bit more about the operations.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not suggesting in any way. I, I just think this is a mighty big number that, you know, when budget time comes around.
It's an important obligation of ours.
It's an important obligation of ours, and so, yeah, no. Thank you for raising the issue, and more than happy to engage in discussions about it. Member Renahan.
If I may briefly, I'd just like to point out, these are not-to-exceed contracts. I mean, this is a very intentional move by our procurement department to make sure that we have enough staff at all times to support what we were legally required to do to keep the care center viable and legally complying entity. So I have a letter from procurement I'm happy to forward to you that can, I think, better explain, and, you know, we can definitely have this conversation. I think this is this kind of a systemic issue that goes on in long-term care facilities, but I'm happy to engage, and I appreciate your, your being engaged in this. Thanks.
So, where were we?
Do we have a second?
We had a motion and a second on the first item, HHS 52-21. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Renahan.
I move on HHS P 5321, Contract Purchase Order with Metropolitan Family Services DuPage to provide domestic violence homeless residents to temporary housing under CSBG CARES Act, March 1st, 2021 to September 15th, 2021, not to exceed $120,000.
Second, Chaplain.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Renahan.
I move on HHS P 5421, Contract Purchase Order Subgrantee Agreement with Northern Illinois Food Bank to provide food and household supplies to prevent COVID spread and alleviate financial stress under CSBG CARES Act, July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, not to exceed $150,000.
Second, Chaplain.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Renahan.
I move to combine items D, E, and F. They are all supplemental staffing for the care center dated April 10th, 2021 to April 9th, 2022.
Second, Desart.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon. I'm sorry. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
But I.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Renahan.
I, I move to approve HHS P 5521, Contract Purchase Order with Maxim Healthcare Services, not to exceed $900,000. Move on HHS P 5621 with Bright Star Care of Central DuPage Wheaton, not to exceed $350,000. Move on HHS P 5721, Delta T Group Illinois, Inc., not to exceed $225,000. And I move on HHS P 5821 with Nova Staff Healthcare Services, not to exceed $225,000.
Second, Desart.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And thank you, Member Renahan, a fine report. On to the Order of Judicial Public Safety, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, was it D through G? I only had D through F on my.
I'm sorry?
I took down the motion to combine as D through F. Was it D through G?
Oh, it didn't include G? I thought it included G.
Oh, sorry, I should have said G. Do you want to do G separately?
Well, we got to go back and do G. With the leave of the body, we'll go back and do Item G. Forgive me. I thought we included all of them.
I apologize for that. I move approval of.
Check the transcript on that one, maybe.
All right. I move approval of HHS P 5821, Approval of Contract Purchase Order with Nova Staff Healthcare Services for supplemental staffing, not to exceed $225,000 for the health, for the.
Second, Chaplain.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante. LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Okey dokey. Thank you. The resolution is adopted. Uh, thank you. On to the Order of Judicial Public Safety, Member Renahan.
All right. I move approval of JPSP 5921, Contract Purchase Order with C5 Solutions for a three-year annual maintenance and support contract, April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2024, for probation and court services, not to exceed $260,668.
Second, Desart.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori, Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Member Renahan.
I move approve change order with Village of Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center to provide police dispatching for period April 1st, 2021 to November 2nd, 2023, contract total not to exceed zero.
Second, Desart.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart. Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Thanks, Mr. Clerk, Member Renahan.
I move approve change order amendment to Resolution JPSP 302-19, issued to Salco Partnership DBA Verizon for cell phone service to the Circuit Court Clerk Office and Chief Judge for a time extension through June 30th, 2021, 2021 for an increase of $5,000.
Second, Desart.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Um, thank you, Member Renahan. On to the Order of Public Works, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Angela Bendinelli, make sure I get that right, for arranging my visit last Thursday to the Nordic Wastewater Facility. Public Works staff met me there, and we toured the facility, which if I could ever say that something needed to be replaced, I would say it was the Nordic Wastewater Facility. We're going to be spending $11 million over the next two years, and this facility will remain operational while the entire facility is being rebuilt. So, uh, it's a big project, and, um, staff is really excited about the contractor, and it was a very, um, educational afternoon, so I appreciate that. Uh, looking at today's item, uh, item A, uh, I move for approval, uh, FMP 005021, recommendation for the approval of a contracted door systems, ASSA Ablloy, for preventative maintenance and repair services for automatic and manual doors with threshold closures as needed for county facilities, for a contract amount not to exceed $52,250.14 per renewal option. Uh, second option to renew. Thank you.
Second, Desart.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski, Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kradzuski.
Aye.
And LaPlante.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Member Ozog. On to the Order of Technology. Uh, in Member Salmon's place, uh, we have Member Greg Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In place of Member Salmon, I move on TEP 0064-21, recommendation for the approval of a contract to AT&amp;T for telecommunications services, including internet inbound, outbound, and long-distance service for county agencies.
Second, Rutledge.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, and Garcia.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, uh, Member Hart. On to the Order of Transportation, Member Pachowski.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I would move to combine Agenda Items A, B, and C, as these are all awarding resolutions.
Second, Chaplain.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan, Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Member Pachowski.
Thank you. I'd move to approve DTR 18921, an awarding resolution to Building Builders Paving LLC for road improvements along Crest Road for an estimated county cost of $2,197,981.30, which is low bid. Move to approve DTR 19021, Resolution, awarding resolution to Arrow Construction for the 2021 Pavement Maintenance North Program for an estimated county cost of $5,487,653.30, also low bid. And move to approve DTR 19121, awarding resolution K5 Construction Corporation for the 2021 Pavement North-South Program for an estimated county cost of $4,93,984.99, low bid.
Second, De Ciani.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve DTR 19221, an integral agreement between the County of DuPage and Markford School District 15 for the installation, installation of a traffic signal at Glen Allen Road.
Second, Desart.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Member Pachowski.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to combine Agenda Items E, F, and G, which are all amendments to resolutions.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pachowski.
I would move to approve DTR 46B20, Amendment to a Resolution for a local public agency agreement between the County of DuPage and Illinois Department of Transportation for improvements along 31st Street with no change to county cost. Move to approve DTR 364B-18, Amendment to a Resolution issued to ALAM Company Contractors for drainage improvements along Myers Road to decrease the funding $1,527,41 cents and a final cost of $169,761,44 cents, a decrease of 0.89 percent. And move to approve DTR 4A20, Amendment to a Resolute to a local public agency agreement between the County of DuPage and Illinois Department of Transportation along 75th Street, uh, to perform an accounting adjustment with no change in county costs.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan, Rutledge. Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Member Pachowski.
I would move to combine HI, J, and K, which are all approval of contracts.
You would?
I would hope so, yes.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski. Kradzuski.
Aye, aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTP 6021, a contract to CoStar Group, Inc. for a four-year professional licensing agreement to access industrial office and commercial real estate listings for a contract total amount not to exceed $7,770.36. Move to approve...
Second, De Ciani.
Move to approve DTP 6121, a contract to Applied Research Associates, Inc. for pavement construct, condition rating, annual maintenance and support for a contract not to exceed $103,139.50. Move to approve DTP 6221, a contract to Atlas Engineering Group for professional construction engineering service upon request, uh, not to exceed $400,000. And move to approve DTP 6321, a contract to Primera Engineers for professional engineering services for the 2021 Pavement North Program for a contract not to exceed $476,573.73.
Second, De Ciani.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pachowski.
I would move to combine Agenda Items L to S, which are all change orders and amendments to resolutions.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve DTP 86A20, an amendment to a resolution issued to STV Incorporated for professional construction engineering services along 75th Street and resulting in amended contract total of $758,124.7, an increase of 29.53 percent. Move to approve DTP 239A20, Amendment to a Resolution issued to BLA for professional construction engineering services along 31st Street with no change in county cost. Move to approve DTR 121A20, Amendment to a Resolution to Knight, Inc. for professional design engineering services for replacement of bridge on Warrenville Road with no change in county cost. Move to approve DTP 242A19, Amendment to a Resolution to Trans Systems Corporation for professional preliminary engineering services along Naperville Road for a total contract $285,917.54 and 11.27 percent increase. Move to approve DTP 211B19, Amendment to a Resolution issued to Civil Tech Engineering for improvements along Bellmott and Finley Road with, and at no, with no adjustment or no change in county cost. Move to approve DTP 172A20, an amendment to a resolution to HW Lackner for professional structural engineering services upon requested the division with no change in county cost. Move to approve DTP 241A20, issued to V3 Companies Professional Design Phase II Engineering Services for improvements along Naperville Road with no change in county cost. And finally, move to approve DTP 83A19, Amendment to a Resolution issued to Patrick Engineering for improvements to the bridge carrying Geneva Road with no change in county cost.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
De Ciani.
Aye.
Eckoff, Garcia.
Aye.
Hart, Kradzuski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
And Ozog.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Pachowski, a fine report. On to the order of next, on to the next order of business entitled Discussion. We're not, we're familiar with this. Um, this is a requirement under state law. Uh, the Pension Obligation Projections Required by Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. Anyone seeking recognition? Anyone, anyone seeing none, hearing none? We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Old Business. Member Chaplin, followed by Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I just wanted to just take this time to briefly speak about, you know, we're passing a year of COVID now and some accomplishments at the county. The county never shut down one day. So that is pretty remarkable. Throughout the whole pandemic, this county was up and running. And, um, just talking with department heads and other people, how, um, hard they all worked to adapt to working with the pandemic.